All right, let me just start, we'll take a motion to close executive session for legal and personnel matters and to reopen the public meeting. Is there a motion? Trustee Golio, Second Trustee Flynn, all in favor? Okay. Meeting will come to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance of the Flag and a prayer by Trustee Flynn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think I speak on behalf of the community when I say, "Thank God for spring." So, Lord, please keep us all safe and healthy over these last few days of winter so we are able to enjoy a well-deserved, beautiful spring. Amen.
Amen to that. Thank you, Bill. And good evening, everybody. Welcome to Village Hall. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Tuesday, March 10, 2015. Just a couple of notes here before we get started. Deputy Mayor Kay is excused. I do need to take a motion to amend the agenda. We're going to be adding as action item number 17, a home rule resolution, which we will talk about when we get there, but I need a motion to amend. So, is there a motion? Trustee Golio, Second Trustee O'Donnell, all in favor? Great, that passes with six eyes. So, we'll add that to the agenda. We will start with courtesy of the floor. If there is anybody who would like to address the board first, then we will have a presentation, the on, sorry, the annual audit report from O'Connor-Davies. So, we'll get to that after courtesy of the floor. We'll then have two public hearings. Shouldn't be too long on the public hearings. So, we'll hopefully get through that pretty quickly and then we'll get to the matters requiring action. So, first, is there anybody who would like to approach the board here tonight? Well, thin here, okay. Great, we'll move on. The first item is a presentation from the annual, which is the annual audit report by the Village auditors, and this is O'Connor-Davies. And we look forward to your report. Good to see you back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. I second those sentiments about this weather in the winter. So, I'm here tonight to present the results of the annual external audit for the period... Oh, I'm sorry. I am Scott Oling. I am a partner with the accounting firm, O'Connor-Davies, and I am here tonight to present the results of the annual external audit that we did for the village for the fiscal year that ended May 31 of 2014. Hopefully, everybody has a copy of the audit booklet. And what I'm going to do is I'm just going to take you through a couple of highlights in the few minutes that I have here tonight. The only part of this report that really belongs to us is the part right after the table of contents, which is the auditor's opinion. We've issued what's now known as an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion on the village's financial statements, meaning that we believe that these financial statements fairly present the results of operations for the fiscal year ended May 2014. Now, the village operates a couple of funds. My primary focus tonight is just to talk about the general fund, which, of course, is the main fund for the village. And the information for the general fund appears on page 59 and also on page 60. This is what we call the income statement or the profit and loss statement for the village for the general fund. Page 59 is the fiscal year ended May 14, and the comparative information appears on page 60 for the previous fiscal year, May 13. Some more detailed information on these numbers presented on page 59 actually begins on page 61 and continues through page, actually around page 66. A little more detail of the numbers that I'll be talking about on page 59. So, when you look at page 59, this is presented in what we call budget format, and you see it's presented in four columns: an original budget column, a final budget column, actual, and then a variance column comparing the actual results to the final budgeted figures. The top part of the page are the revenue sources that support your operations. And you could see that originally total revenues were estimated at about $14.8 million. Some slight modification in the revised column, but also about $14.8 million is what was estimated as revenues coming in to the village. The main revenue source, of course, is the first line, which is the levy of the property taxes. So, you could see that that was estimated at approximately $11 million out of the $14.8. There's a line called non-property taxes of about $1.7 million. That's mostly the sales tax distribution that you take in from Westchester County. And then a few other revenue sources, licenses and permits, you know, the various village fees, that get charged. When you come down that first column, the second group are the expenditures. So, this is what you are spending those resources on, and this is, again, in summary format that's detailed out in the subsequent pages. But basically, the budget's broken down into what we call general government support areas. So, those are the administrative functions of the village, you know, the treasurer's office, and, you know, those kinds of administrative items. That's also where tax surchararies are funded out of in this group. So, about $2.5 million budgeted for that originally. Public safety, obviously, the cost of running, the police and fire functions of the village, about $4 million. Transportation costs, that's a group that is like the street maintenance and those kinds of things for about $1 million. Culture and recreation or parks-type services, $1 million one. Home and community is, you know, basically refuse and those kinds of things, $1.2. And then employee benefits of about $3.9 million. So, those are benefits you provide legally or contractually to employees: pension contributions, health insurance, your share of social security costs, those kinds of things. So, in the first column, you could see the original budget was about $14 million for spending. So, as you work down that column, then you see a positive 628. So, at this point, revenues that you budgeted exceed your expenditures by about $600,000. But then there's this other group that we call other sources and uses. This is money both coming into the general fund and going out of the general fund, usually to other funds. In this case, there was $300,000 budgeted to come in from debt service to help offset your debt service costs, but there's also about $2.1 million going out to debt service to actually fund your debt service obligation, your principal and interest on your borrowed monies. So, when you come down to the bottom in that first column, you see a negative $1.2 million. So, when the budget was approved and adopted for this fiscal year, expenditures were estimated to be greater than your revenues. In New York, you are required to adopt a balanced budget, and one of the budget balancing mechanisms that you are allowed to do is to use fund balance, to use previously accumulated monies that the village has as a balancing tool for the budget. So, that's what you did. You used about $1.2 million. That includes some encumbrance number from the prior year of about $43,000 and $1,195 that you gave back essentially in tax relief, because if you didn't do this, you would have either had to have levied one point, almost $1.2 million more in property taxes or cut spending $1.2 or something in between. So, that's how you come down to a balanced budget, you know, in the first column. Similarly, in the second column, what you'll see mostly, let's say, in the expenditure section are some modifications to the budget that was adopted. One of the areas that got amended this year was for an accounting adjustment that had to be made. If you look about two-thirds of the way down in the other financing sources, uses section, you see a line for bonds issued. The village issued about $1.2 million in bonds this year that were related for tax surcharary borrowings, not capital. So, that's why it's in here. The capital borrowings are in the capital fund. But that, part of that $1.2 million, a few lines up, you'll see in the debt service section of the expenditure area, part of that was utilized to pay off bond anticipation notes. So, it was kind of a gross-up entry to the budget in order to reflect this transaction of the bond money coming in and the bond anticipation note money being paid off. So, that's really what happened in the second column. You'll also see differences on most of the expenditure lines, because during the year, the treasurer's office will seek budget transfers to move authorization resources from one line to another, because they're not allowed to overspend an appropriation account without board approval. So, when you get to the third column, after the two budget columns, you see what actually happened. So, the first two columns are the plan, but the third column is what actually happened. And so, you could see in the revenue section, compared to a plan of taking in $14.8 million in revenues, the village took in $15.2 million. So, that's why the variance column, you see about a $450,000 positive variance, which, of course, is a good thing. Your revenues came in better than anticipated. Most of that was in, as you could see, on the license and permit line, came in about $238,000 better than budget and came in at about $639,000. That's up, if you compare it to the same number, you know, on page 60, you're up about $300,000 this year, and that was, you know, primarily permit fees related to, I believe, the master's school and the work that was going on there that needed permits. So, that was, you know, an additional source of revenue that was, you know, not in the original budget. That made up most of the difference. Sales tax collections were up this year compared to, you know, the prior year, they were up about $90,000 or so compared to where it was, and we saw that countywide, you know, overall sales tax receipts were up countywide. So, you know, so that was good news. The real property tax number, you could see, though, came in short of budget. Again, that is also, I don't want to say it's an accounting adjustment, but what happens is for property taxes that are not paid and that are in arrears, we are not allowed, or you're not allowed, we're not allowed to let you recognize that revenue until those taxes are actually paid. And I'll show you where that number appears. So, really, the property tax number compared to last year was up about $170,000, but your levy for the general fund was really up about $270,000 compared, you know, that's what you levied, but because of certain taxes that were not collected, you only realized essentially $170,000 more revenue than you did the previous year. So, that's something to look at.
So, even though you may be getting in some taxes in arrears, if they're not fully paid up, you can't...
We can't recognize it as revenue.
You can't recognize them until they're all paid up?
Correct. We're allowed to, it's in the accounting, you know, rules, that we're allowed to pick up the first 60 days after your fiscal year ends. So, any taxes collected related to prior fiscal years that's collected even up to 60 days after the year end, we could bring that in. But, you know, if I had $100,000 in taxes that I owed on my property and I didn't pay it, you don't get to recognize that as revenue, even though you levied it until I actually pay it.
But if you paid $50,000 of it...
You would pick that up.
You could pick it. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought you said you couldn't pick it up until it was all paid.
That's correct. Right. You can't pick, we cannot pick up what has not been paid by the 60 days, you know, after the year end. And I'll show you where that number is also. On the expenditure side of the budget, in the middle of the page, you see that you spent $14.5 million this year. If you compare that to the same number on page 60, it looks like your spending was up about $1.1 million over the prior year. But again, if you look at the line that says debt service principal within that expenditure section, there's an $804,000 number. That, again, is the pay-down related to the bonds that were issued. So, I think, you know, from a comparative point of view, that has to kind of be backed out, because that's just an accounting anomaly, because that's to be, we can't record it net, we have to gross it up. So, if you take that $800,000 out, really expenses were up about $300,000 or about 2, 2-point-something percent for the year. You know, most of that could be attributed to, you know, some increase in some legal and engineering fees, some utility cost increases when utility costs spiked, you know, a year ago. There was also some judgments that were paid out, particularly on the Stanley Avenue property area. So, those are some of the things that drove some of the expense increases in the budget this year. There was also some hurricane sandy cleanup that was, you know, in these figures from the previous, you know, from the previous year or that were in the previous year. So, that helped you. So, when you get down to the bottom of the actual column, the third number up, you see a positive $89,000. So, positive numbers generally are good. That means for the year, your revenues exceeded your expenses by $89,000. What's even better is, when you compare it to the budget column, in your budget plan, if everything came in according to your plan, your fund balance would have gone down $1.2 million, because you use fund balance to balance your spending plan. You use your savings account to say, "I'm going to balance my spending plan." Well, not only did you not use that savings account, but you actually added $89,000. So, to me, you know, on a budget of $16 million, that's almost like a break-even year. I mean, you managed to kind of break even. From a budgetary point of view, over in the fourth column, we call that a budget surplus of $1.3 million, which I will show you essentially what you did and how you utilized that budget surplus, because you essentially use that to give back tax relief in the year that you're in now for 1415. If you had used all the $1.2, then your fund balance would have been down, and then you wouldn't have those funds, you know, to give back, and then that causes a host of other issues. So, the $89,000 adds to your fund balance that you started the year with of just under $3.5 million. So, you end the year, as you could see, with total fund balance just under $3.6 million. If you come back to page 58, 58's the balance sheet, so the snapshot of the village at May 31 of last year, and that $3.5 million number's the second number up from the bottom, it's the fund balance. It represents the difference between your assets and your liabilities and this new category deferred inflows of resources. So, your assets up top were $5.4 million at May 31, primarily in the form of cash, you know, in the bank, in FDIC-insured, you know, banks with collateral posted against it and everything, of $4.5 million. But you'll see, the second number there is the number I mentioned earlier about the property taxes. As of May 31, there were $379,000 in unpaid property taxes.
That's we're going up to the top, right?
The second number from, yeah, second number from the top, $379,000. And you could see, even just compared to last year, that number was $244,000. So, that increase of $100,000 and change is why I said on the revenue line, the property tax on the previous page, that even though you had raised the tax levy for the general fund about $270,000 over the previous year, your revenue was only about $170,000 higher because of this adjustment, because the receivable went up. I can't recognize that difference in your revenues, or I can't let you recognize that difference. So, until this 379 gets collected, it's not in your fund balance. And as a matter of fact, if you look about two-thirds of the way down the page, this line that says deferred inflows of resources, and then it says deferred tax revenues, $352,000. So, basically, 352 out of that $379,000, I could not recognize. The difference between those two, about $25,000, that's the taxes that actually did get paid. Remember, I said about the 60 days after year end? That 60-day payment was only about $25,000. So, we were able to recognize that in your revenues, but the remaining 352 could not be recognized. So, until this money is collected and in your bank, it's not revenue. If it was collected tomorrow, your fund balance essentially would be $350,000 higher than what it is. So, you know, it's something to look at as to, because, you know, I think this number has grown a little bit over time. You know, if I remember several years ago, it was, you know, maybe $30,000 or $40,000. I mean, it was a low number. So, I think it's, you know, really something to take a look at, figure out why, you know, this number's growing, what taxes are not, you know, being paid, because ultimately, you know, for those taxes that are not being paid, you're asking essentially other citizens, you know, to make up for that. So, you know, that's certainly something to look at.
Well, I think what happens is, you know, you have a manageable number, right, that you would, you expect to sort of carry over...
Right.
You know, and, but when it creeps up, I think one thing it does show is that the economy isn't helping everybody. So, you do have some people, we do have that in Dobbs Ferry like everywhere else. And then I think there's the emotional side of it in terms of the actions that you take to collect...
Of course.
...can be brutal.
Of course.
Right? And then so you have, but that's a big number. That is a big number.
That's a big number. Now, what some municipalities do is what they do, it's called like a tax overlay. So, if there's a certain amount that you expect to not be paid, you know, in a given year, what you end up trying to do is, even though you adopt a balanced budget and you say, "Okay, I need this amount of property taxes to balance my spending plan," below that line, you add this tax overlay line and maybe, you know, whatever it is, $25,000, $50,000. Now, in essence, that's the same thing that I just said, that in essence, you're levying additional taxes against other folks to make up for the folks who are not paying. So, you're levying this overlay. You're actually over-leveing, you know, by $50,000 more than what you need to balance your budget, so that when $50,000 of people don't pay, you still have the cash number that you need to operate your budget. I don't think you're at that point where you need to do something like that, but that's what I know other, you know, municipalities consider, you know, if they're expecting, you know, some big unpaid, you know, tax accounts. So, again, when you get down to that fund balance, and, because I don't want to take too much more of your time, as I said, the total is $3.6 million. But in government, you know, the fund balance is split into, you know, a lot of different slices, like a pizza pie, and there's several groups that the fund balance goes into. And we couldn't fit all the detail on that page, so we then created a page on page 50, which breaks down that $3.5 million into these individual pots. And if you look in the first column, which is the general fund on page 50, you'll see the total in that column is the $3.5 million total fund balance. The first group is what we call non-spendable fund balance, and there's only $15,000 in there, and it's for prepaid items. Sometimes the village has to pay some bills in May that are really for the next month, so the cash is out the door, even though it's not an expense of that fiscal year. So, since the cash is gone, we say you can't spend that portion of fund balance, but it's only $15,000. The next group is restricted fund balance, which are restrictions primarily under general municipal law, and those are the only things that are allowed to be in there. For the general fund, all you have is about $27,000. We call it law enforcement. There's some money that the police department gets from asset forfeitures and drug seizures and those kinds of things. And those funds under general municipal law can only be spent on certain items. So, that money that's unspent is, stays in that restricted fund balance, can only be used for that purpose. Again, very small amount. The next group, the bigger amount, is the assigned fund balance. It's really made up of the two, is made up of two numbers. The first group of numbers there, there are subtotals, has purchases on order, which are encumbrances. So, those were purchase orders that were in progress at the end of the year, but the goods, you know, just didn't make it into the village by May, so it's not really an expense, but it was meant to be an expense of that year. So, we reserved the fund balance for $105,000. That will amend the budget that you're in right now, so you can finish paying for those items that came in. But the bigger portion in that assigned fund balance is $1,150. So, that's what you gave back in tax relief in the 20, in the budget you're in right now, 1415, $1,150. So, that budget surplus that I was talking to you about on the other page of about $1,300, that budget surplus helped you regenerate money to give back again, because otherwise you would have had the same situation that I described before. You would have either had to raise taxes $1.1 million to balance your spending or cut spending $1,001, which would be, you know, pretty significant, or something in between. So, that's what was there. So, that's why you do have to manage the budget each year to make sure that you're regenerating the stuff so you can continue, you know, to give this back. Otherwise, you could possibly have some spike in your tax rates. So, what's left is, when you take the $3.5 million total fund balance and you back out those pieces, you're left with $2.2 million, almost $2.3 million, in what we call undesigned or unreserved, or it used to call undesigned, now it's called unassigned, fund balance. That represents about 13% of your budget that you're in now, 1415, which is a healthy position. I believe most of the credit rating agencies like to see, you know, certainly about 10% in your fund balance. So, you're, you know, you're kind of within that range, and, you know, you're in a healthy position for that.
I think that's our policy, that we do have a trigger that can adjust it...
Correct.
...to stay at 10%.
Correct. So, you know, that's where you're at, you're in, you know, I would say, you know, you're in good financial position here as a May 31, but obviously, you still need to be diligent. You know, I'm sure you're in preparation of the 1516 budget, and, you know, you have to, you know, watch for things that are economically sensitive and, you know, that may not recur or, you know, other things that might happen. Obviously, you have, you know, labor contracts that, you know, still have to be settled and, you know, health insurance goes up, and I'm sure you're trying to stay within, you know, the tax cap. And so, all these, you know, competing things that, you know, are drivers of having to use fund balance. So, you know, it's very important that, you know, you stay with, you know, adopting conservative budgets and making sure that, you know, you can maintain this position.
Just one thing on the fund balance. A few years ago, working with the Budget Committee, we took a hard look at what would be best for the village and residents, is putting, you know, triggers, as the mayor alluded to, when it reaches a certain threshold on the low end, because we made a policy that it has to be a certain amount, a certain percentage, and I believe it is Marcus, that 10% that we must maintain. If we were to go below that, there are other cuts that would have to be put in play. So, that's a village policy that we put in, because we didn't want anybody to be able just to say, "Okay, we have a nice surplus in fund balance. We don't have to work as hard as budgeting and making sure that every department's doing their job, because we can just dip in a little further."
Right.
And maybe we'll make it up next year. We don't want to leave ourselves in that position, because the credit agencies, as you alluded to, take a hard look at that and when they give us our ratings. On the other side, once we exceed a certain percentage, the village also has to automatically give back to taxpayers. So, the village doesn't hold too much as a piggy bank, so to say. So, we think we struck a pretty good area, you know, to work with, and it's a good balance for the residents and the village, so.
And I know that, you know, you folks are looking at doing a bond refinancing or a refunding over the next, you know, couple of weeks, and certainly, you know, these financial statements will certainly help you, you know, to get a favorable rate on that refunding of the debt.
I think just, I mean, this is always great that you come, Scott, and give this presentation. I think some of the trustees may have some further questions and getting to learn the budget a little bit more, although I think we have a pretty good feel for it. We have a Budget Committee that gets very, very involved. And I know, in addition to that, you've also provided some other reports to the village, sort of as addendums to the, to the supplement, you know, the, basically, the audit report. Now, I don't want to go into all them, other than, you know, each year, I think, one of the things that you mentioned that did stand out in that report, by the way, this all becomes available, it's available for the public, is the uncollected taxes of $379,000. That one really jumped out, and you did make a, you've made some recommendations. And there are a list of other things that, you know, the village does a lot of things good, but we don't do everything perfectly. And you've made some other recommendations here. Luckily, it's not, "You guys screwed up so badly, you're $2 million short in your fund balance."
Right.
That's not happening. But there are procedures that could be improved.
Yes.
And you have pages of them, and we've seen this before, and I would just address that to the extent, because I don't want to take too much time here, but I know the trustees are, will look at this and will want, from our new treasurer, Jeff, to welcome to your first official meeting, our newly hired treasurer, who we're really excited to be here. And I think, Jeff, you've already addressed some of these issues that were raised and recommendations and have a plan, and I think we might want to talk about that more in public. I don't know if Scott's available to come back, and we certainly, I'd like the Budget Committee to see this, but to have that dialogue and really get a sense that some of these things that the village is deficient on in terms of really some of the accounting and processing, we have a plan to improve it.
Yeah. Yeah, I, you know, I do want to say that, you know, for this letter, as an auditor, what we're required to do in these communications, you know, that there are auditing standards that we have to follow, and those auditing standards really require us to report to you if we deem one of these deficiencies to be either what they call a material weakness in internal control or a significant deficiency in internal control. That's what we are required, you know, to report to you. What we've reported to you here is what is really another level down from that, which is what we call control deficiencies. Technically, I don't need to report those at all. I'm not required to. But as a firm, you know, we've have, you know, we've always had a policy that, you know, we just want to let, you know, everyone know that, you know, we consider some of these things more administrative, not high-level enough to warrant being classified in one of the other two more serious, you know, categories. So, this, a lot of this is informational, you know, it's not meant to say that anything is wrong. So, you know, the taxes receivable, doesn't mean anything is wrong. It means, hey, you know, it's nothing wrong that finance did, you know, somebody didn't pay their taxes. But it's alerting you to say, "There's a consequence to that and an impact, you know, financial impact, you know, to that." And there are obviously, you know, methods and, you know, legal things that, you know, that you could do to, you know, to go after that money. Obviously, that then becomes a policy decision as to how you want to, you know, handle that. But, you know, you do have obviously legal recourse, you know, on these taxes. So, so, you know, again, you know, we put these things in there, a lot of it is informational. I don't want it, you know, to be like, "Oh, you know, finance department didn't collect $379,000," because, you know, that's not really the case. And so, you know, that's what I wanted to do.
Well, actually, we haven't collected it, have we?
Right.
So, it is the case.
Right, right.
So, I think it, yeah, I mean, we need a plan for that. We definitely need a plan for that, because it has reached a point, and it's good that we really can put some focus on it. But most importantly is that there aren't major deficiencies or of a material nature, But most importantly is that there aren't major deficiencies or of a material nature, as you said, that really affects the financial condition of the village, which is really excellent, has been reported recently by the New York State Controller's Office. Dobbs Ferry had one of, if not the lowest, and low being a good thing on that test score.
Yes.
And that wasn't easy for everybody, so.
Right.
But I would like, you know, to make sure, Jeff, that we are addressing these deficiencies in procedures, and I think that you did impress upon us as part of the review process that you're the man for this, you know, to do this, so we feel pretty good about that. Any other questions from the trustees at all, or comments before we move on?
Just, I'm sorry, Scott, I think where we ended after the 60 days was 352 of uncollected. Do you know if that number has gone down since then?
That I wouldn't know.
Okay.
You know, that's where I stopped, you know, to do that.
I can answer that question. It's the same number of individuals that we looked at a couple of years ago that continue not paying, so that's something that we discussed in the past, we should have future discussions, how you want to deal with it.
Great, good. Thank you.
Scott, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the report and the detail of it, and we appreciate taking some actions, and Jeff, you addressing some of these things, and we'll keep this in front of the board and in front of the public going forward, and our Budget Committee as well. Thank you very much.
I'd be glad to assist you, you know, whatever you're...
Excellent. Thank you. Several public hearings. So the first public hearing is on a proposed local law to amend Village Code Section 290-27 Municipal Parking Areas. I first need a motion to open this public hearing. Is there a motion? Trustee Golio, second trustee Rusillo, all in favor? And that passes with six eyes. Just for the benefit, Marcus, can you help me out here, just for the benefit of the public and the board?
Sure. Just for everybody's information, this public hearing doesn't affect any fees at all. It's just to clarify some language. When we actually adopted some fee changes a couple of meetings ago, we actually created a fee for non-resident parking in the downtown. Our code reading didn't describe that that well, so the Police Chief got together with Darius and drafted up so that we can be very clear what we intended to do with the fee structure. That's how, we're clarifying some language, that's all.
Okay, so we're not actually changing any fees? We established those fees at our several meetings ago?
Correct.
I think there are a few areas that were left out that the chief felt should have been included in people that buy the downtown central business parking, that we're adding those, right?
That's correct.
That's really all it was.
That's correct.
So it was specifically to put clarity on the downtown parking definitions?
Just definition.
Okay. And I know we had this posted, as we properly do in the paper, so anybody that, you know, had an issue with how this will read in the code if we do adopt this proposed local law, is there anybody that would wish to care to address the board on this at all, or may comment? Okay, any other questions from the board at all? Betsy, anything, you're satisfied with the wording and the language? Okay. Then I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Trustee Cassell, second trustee Flynn, discussion, all in favor? Okay, public hearing is closed, and let's see if we can take some action here. So I'll take a motion to adopt proposed local law number 3-2015. This will be a local law amending Chapter 290-27 Municipal Parking Areas of the Village of Dobbs Ferry Code as explained and outlined in the resolution, and explained by the village attorney and as recommended by the Dobbs Ferry Police Chief. Is there a motion? Trustee Rusillo, second, got to look for Donna here, trustee Cassell, it's on some parking here. Discussion, all in favor? And that local law is passed. Thank you. Public hearing number two is on a proposed local law to amend Village Code Section 98. This is the Youth Services Council. Is there a motion to open this public hearing? Trustee Rusillo, second trustee O'Donnell, discussion, all in favor? Okay, public hearing is open, and this is a proposed local law amending Chapter 98 Youth Services Council of the Village of Dobbs Ferry Code. I'll let trustee Rusillo give us a little bit of background on what this is all about.
Thank you. This is, again, to help us get a grant that we've applied for with the federal government to help youth, prevent youth substance abuse. So the language of the mission of the Youth Service Council had to be tightened up a little bit, to be made more specific with regard to the goal of the Youth Service Council, to include specifically substance abuse education, prevention, leadership training, and developing workshops and discussion groups. So we think, or we hope, with the tightening of this language and making it more specific, that will improve our chances of getting a grant that we've, I think we've already applied for. Is that true, Marcus?
That's correct.
Right, so that's the purpose of this change.
Okay, I think we discussed this at the prior meeting that we had, and setting the public hearing, and so here we are, we've set notice and set the public hearing, and is there anybody from the community or that would care to comment on this? Okay, then I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Trustee Rusillo, second trustee Golio, discussion, all in favor? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and let's move this forward, because this is a really great thing. So I'll take a motion on the proposed local law number five, number four-2015, a local law amending Chapter 98 Youth Services Council of the Village of Dobbs Ferry Code as outlined by trustee Rusillo, as recommended by trustee Rusillo, and all the great work that the Youth Service Council is doing in support of that. Is there a motion? Trustee Rusillo, second, trustee O'Donnell, discussion, all in favor? Great, that passes with six eyes, and it would have been more than that. Great job, Vinnie. I saw Lisa on the train the other day, and she was actually reading a big manual, you know, about applying for this grant and learning up on it, and everybody's really charged up.
They really are.
She's done a great job of liaising and helping support them. Great. Okay, matters requiring action. Action item number one is mayor to announce the formation of Dobbs Ferry Historic District Task Force to lead a community review for consideration of implementing guidelines and the creation of historic districts in the village. I just want to give a little bit of a background here, and then I'm going to ask Sonia Terjani in to come to the mic and tell a little bit more about this initiative. But I just want to read off something I presented to the board, and I've worked with Sonia on in pushing this initiative ahead, which is, I think, really a great thing and a community-led effort. Just sort of the background and justification for the formation of this ad hoc committee, some of the mandates and objectives, so everybody is clear on that, and then I'm going to ask Sonia, if she could, to kind of fill in some more of the details and some of the people that will be involved. Recently, there has been a growing interest within the community for the creation of historic districts. The mayor, in cooperation with interested residents, is forming an ad hoc Dobbs Ferry Historic District Task Force for the purpose of a comprehensive, community-oriented review of the consideration of historical districts in the Village of Dobbs Ferry. So a little bit of background, in 2002, the Board of Trustees adopted a revised zoning code and the Dobbs Ferry Vision Plan, and specifically in that Vision Plan, Section 300-43, and I'll quote from the Vision Plan directly, "Landmark and Historic District Designation," outlines the benefits of historic districts and specifies a process for designating as a historic district a contiguous area containing a number of sites, buildings, structures, or features, having a special character and historical architectural or aesthetic interest or value, and constituting a distinct section of the village. In addition, the Vision Plan document recommends consideration for the adoption of heritage or historic district guidelines to protect the historic character of certain neighborhoods. Specific references have been made specifically to Beldon Avenue and Osborne, which is actually the Lower Clinton Avenue region of the village. So specifically, the mandate and objectives of this ad hoc task force is to really organize and promote an open-minded, community-oriented review and discussion of historic districts, which will include public workshops as the chairman of this committee and the workshop, the committee will deem appropriate, so as to communicate with the public. That communication will include, obviously, input from residents, input from experts, input from any people that the committee may decide we should hear from and need to hear from, talk about the benefits and the risks of historic districts, provide specific examples, research the findings, the difference between national, state, and municipal designations, why Dobbs Ferry, and specifically what neighborhoods. We mentioned a few already that are mentioned in the Vision Plan. Look at the economic impacts potentially of historic districts to individual homeowners, to property valuations in general, to the village-wide tax base, and possible impact on tourism. Other impacts could include environmental impacts, knowledge and understanding of the village's history itself, redevelopment and land use in general, and home improvement and the approval process. How would that change, if it would change at all? Determine whether the process for creating historical districts outlined in the current code is adequate, and to recommend updates if necessary, draft legislation clarifying how historic districts will be regulated in Dobbs Ferry, and to consult regularly with the New York State Historic Preservation Office. Update, report, and work closely with the Board of Trustees, and to provide a final report with recommendations to the Board of Trustees in the future. Now, depending upon the final report, the recommendations, it certainly would be contemplated that the Board of Trustees, you know, at the end of this process, would have a requisite public hearing on this issue. It would also be very, very likely, given the nature of this particular legislative initiative and changes that we might be considering, that it would need to also be reviewed by the Planning Board, which would be required under our code, and may also require additional comment periods or other review under SECR, which is the Environmental Quality Review Act of New York State law. So we'll have to look into that, and of course, the committee will be looking into all those types of things, and ultimately, at the end of the day, the Board of Trustees, obviously, involved, any sort of legislative change to the code would be the ultimate body to consider those recommendations and to possibly take action on that. So that's basically it, in more than a nutshell, fair amount of detail there. You know, the village, this administration and board has been particularly supportive of, you know, enhancing and promoting Dobbs Ferry's history. We've increased significantly the budget for the Historical Society, which has been great. We had a nice historical cemetery project, and this sort of just fits in this really nicely. And at this time, I'd really like to ask Sonia Terjani in to come to the microphone. Sonia has been really just incredible in her presentation in this idea and this concept. She approached the board some months ago, and she did it in a really, really good way, you know, in a very respectful way, and really gave us a lot of things to think about. She's followed up, she's definitely very, very interested in that, there's no doubt about it, but I think she's definitely the right person, and she's really the one and the reason why we're sort of moving ahead with this. And, you know, as we've talked about, and you've said too, and I know you'll talk more about it, you know, this is sort of a residents being involved too, that are really sort of jointly, and we both felt and agreed that it's really important, you know, an ad hoc committee has the village involvement, and that really gives it a lot more oomph, and a lot more can come out of that. So it's great that we can be working together, and so Sonia, thanks very much for stepping up and bringing this to the board's attention, and I'll reintroduce Sonia Terjani in, who will be the chairman of this task force.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to participate in shaping the future of our village. Since starting this project, I've learned so much about the history of our area, about families like the Fields and the Storms who farmed this land and then helped turn it into a thriving village. I've learned about the architectural styles that were popular in the region when they were building their homes, and the homes for their children and for their grandchildren. And I've read countless newspaper articles about how they bought and sold their property using tree stumps and large rocks as points of reference. These homes are where they built their future, and some of us are lucky enough to live in them today. For the rest of us, just being able to walk up and down streets like Beldon and Maple and Storm and Clinton is a reminder of the hard-working families who shaped the village where we live, and to their commitment to making this a beautiful, peaceful place to come home to after a long day at work. Since starting this project, I've met so many Dobbs Ferry residents and made so many friends, from architects to realtors to artists and historians, and yes, builders and developers, all of whom are equally passionate about making Dobbs Ferry a village where people will want to raise their children and take care of their grandparents and learn from the past and safeguard the future. The task force we've created represents a wide swath of these friends and neighbors, and I really look forward to working with all of them to protect our cultural heritage and shine a light on everything that makes Dobbs Ferry so special. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sonia. While you're there, I would like to list out, why don't we list out the names of the individuals to start, because I think they deserve some recognition, and, you know, there may be some that come and go along the way, but we've reached out to these individuals. I just would first, I asked Jeff O'Donnell, trustee O'Donnell, to act as liaison to the committee, which Jeff will do, he's the perfect guy for it, the work you've done with the Historical Society, so this fits in pretty nicely, and thanks, Jeff, for stepping up and the time you're going to put into this committee and working with Sonia.
Thank you for inviting me to do it.
Also, Donna Cassell, trustee Cassell, will act as alternate, because she is the liaison to the Planning Board, which will be the next, which will be likely the statutory review board that will look at this, so her involvement's going to be very, very important. I know it's an important thing for her as well. Julia Unger, who's been before the board, a longtime resident of Beldon Avenue, will act as the liaison to the Beldon residents, so that all the folks on Beldon, and this, you know, there's obviously, there's some focus on Beldon here, will have good representation on the board, and Julia will be reporting back to them. We did want to make the team sort of a manageable team, and so Julie has agreed to take on that responsibility. Steve Hunter, who is the member, longstanding member of the Planning Board and a longtime resident, Steve Tilly, local architect, we felt it was really important to have an architect on the board on this committee, and Steve, really, we were glad that he's willing to put his time in, and knows as much about the history of Dobbs Ferry and the architectural history of Dobbs Ferry than anyone. Ruth Castell, a resident on Clinton Avenue, she's got a real appreciation for this. Drew Coburn, a nutty friend of mine, who actually happens to live in the oldest house in Dobbs Ferry on Fork Lane, absolutely, I think it's the oldest house. But he'll be a great addition to this committee, and he's very, very interested about the history. Don Mara, we asked, is former mayor, a former official, but also Don worked with the Village of Irvington when he was the village manager there on historical districts, so brings that knowledge. Mike Patino, who is the chair of the ARB, and we know Mike is busy, and the ARB may have some other designated or other members of the ARB that fit in, but we'll have that definitely represented. Nick Capuano, who's a longtime Dobbs Ferry resident, took some interest in this, and Sonia, you know, he, just, this sort of rounds out. I mean, this is a longtime resident, you know, really just wants to be involved and took up this issue, and is really interested in giving his time back to the community in this way. Dwight Douglas will also sit on the, as the village planner, obviously that makes sense, as well as Ed Manley, as a representative of the Building Department. You know, we may ask another real estate agent, I think maybe a real estate agent, who's interested, maybe, just to give a perspective of, you know, so we might still reach out to some folks, but that's basically your team.
Yep.
And we want to thank Sonia especially for stepping up and chairing this committee, this task force, but also want to thank each and every one of these individuals who have committed their time. I mean, they were spoken to, and they're willing to put in the time, and I know you will be putting some time into this, so.
Oh, we will.
Looking forward to it. We're really all here, looking forward to support your efforts and being involved along the way.
Thank you very much.
So good luck, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. I appreciate your support.
Thanks, Sonia. Action item number two is to consider a motion accepting the resignation of Mr. Dennis Roth. Pretty straightforward here. Is there a motion? Trustee O'Donnell, second, trustee Rusillo, discussion, all in favor? That passes with six eyes. Action item number three is to consider a motion granting an easement to property owner of Five High Street. I think we need a little bit of background on this, Marcus, or Darius, just for the benefit of the board, and...
The attorney for the applicant and his broker all here, this is an issue on Five High Street. Mr. Mayor, where there's a portion of the village road that for years has been part of the driveway of Five High Street. I believe they're trying to sell the property now, and this came up on title. They've requested an easement over the hatched portion from the village, and if you were to consider that, they would need to maintain it, the new owners would be filed as part of the easement, they'd have to indemnify the village for any damages caused to anyone, and also have to defend the village and provide insurance to the village on that parcel also. Their attorney is here to add anything more and to request the easement. As a, given up a property right, the village would have to pass a resolution to approve that, but it wouldn't cost us anything, they would pay the amount that would be due to us for the easement also.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and council, good evening. My name is Guy Novo, spelled phonetically, the last name is November, Oscar Victory Oscar. The homeowner, the executor of the estate of the decedent, Richard Zalanka, spelled phonetically, Zulu, Echo, Lima, Oscar, November, Kilo, Alpha. Gene Manfredonia was the owner of this property for about 40 years. No one realized that the cross-hatched area just south of High Street is not actually part of the property. There's reverse mortgage on the property, and the bank is interested in getting paid. We have a buyer who is ready to go to contract on the property, which would allow us to delay the bank from foreclosing. The homeowner, the executor of the estate, Mr. Zalanka, is interested in obtaining the easement so that he can provide good title, so to speak, to the buyer, pay off the bank with the reverse mortgage, and ultimately sell the property. As I said, the property's been occupied for more than 40 years by the family. No one realized that this property line, the property line, ended short of the cross-hatch area just south of High Street, and this is the reason that we need the easement. We're prepared to provide surveys, of course, the problem is several surveyors have been contacted with the snow and ice, they simply cannot find the appropriate property markers to do a proper meets and bounds survey. They're hoping... They're hoping to be able to do that within a couple of weeks, depending on how the weather treats us. And as soon as that is done, we will be able to provide to the village two surveys, one of the property as it now stands, the second of the parcel over which the owner is interested in obtaining the easement. As Mr. Shafizadeh has already said, we would pay the appropriate price to purchase, to obtain the easement. The buyer will have to obtain the proper title, insurance, indemnify the village, et cetera. Everybody is on board, prepared to do this. It's simply a matter of knowing that the village will grant the easement, waiting, as I said, for the weather to cooperate a little so we can complete the surveys, get them to you, and then move forward.
So the property in question here basically comes right up to the curb, where the curb is on the road?
Are you looking at the crosshatch?
I'm looking at the crosshatch.
The crosshatch.
I guess.
The property goes to where the crosshatch is. And in a couple of small instances, actually crosses into the crosshatch. There's a retaining wall. But everybody, with respect to the property, has always assumed, I don't know why this wasn't discovered when title was done, SSI, more than 40 years ago, but everybody assumed the property went straight to High Street. And in fact, it does not. There's village property.
Okay, so I guess I meant the crosshatched area where it extends to is that the easement that you're asking for would be to this basic curve?
The crosshatch property.
Right.
That would be to the curb where it is now.
Yes.
And it's not going to be any part of High Street.
No.
Where the roadbed is today, although it's part of, quote unquote, High Street, but it's not where the roadbed is today.
Right. Would not go into the street at all, just to the curb.
And I go down that road every single day, literally. I mean, so that's, yeah, you've got some pathways that go there or I guess up to the...
Yes.
Right, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't think there's any issue for the village. As long as we get the insurance and they defend and indemnify us, it's not an issue from a legal perspective.
Yeah, anybody see an issue with this? I really don't either. I mean, yeah. You have buyers or you want to put the market...
We have buyers who are prepared to go to contract. They just need the comfort of knowing that the village will approve the easement so that they're comfortable signing the contract. And as I said, we're anxious to get a contract signed so we can delay the bank with the reverse mortgage because banks want to get paid. Reverse mortgages, people don't realize if the owner dies, mortgage is payable immediately.
Yeah.
May I have a question just for...
Right here, Marcus, surround him. There you go. Just, by granted, this easement, does it doesn't allow whoever the future property owner is to build anything along, on top of that easement?
I don't think there's a desire to build anything.
You're selling it. I'm saying in the future, if I grant the easement...
We'll include that in the easement. Very good point.
Good point, yeah.
That point's...
Just for access.
Right, just for access. Ingress and egress easement that they'll maintain.
And that they have maintained, really, for 40 years.
Yes.
Maintained by the homeowners, not by the village.
How much property would you say that is? Can you tell from the...
Do you have any idea, counsel?
Uh, no. It's four parking spaces.
Four car lanes?
So four car lanes, figure 45, 50 feet and 10, maybe 500, 600 square feet, I'm guessing.
Yeah, we'll need to get a meets and bounds description, specific meets and bounds description from the surveyor.
Absolutely. It's just a question of the snow melting.
Okay. I don't see a real issue here. I think it's been part, you guys have been painting this property for 40 years and it's pretty clear cut, so. Then, let's see, well, let's see if we can move this forward here. I'll take a motion to grant the easement as requested to the property owner of Five High Street, adding, subject to approval by the village attorney. Is there anything else I should add to that?
That's good.
I think that'll do it. That's the motion. Is there, is there a motion? Trustee Golio, is there a second? Trustee O'Donnell, discussion, all in favor? Opposed? That's six ayes, huh? Okay. You're good.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Want to address something else?
Action item number four is to consider a motion to authorize the deputy treasurer to process year-end transfers and amendments to the current fiscal year. We heard a little bit about that a little early in the presentation, right?
Yeah.
Transfers and, okay. This is just basic sort of administrative things that we need to do, you need to do from time to time.
Absolutely.
Nothing unusual here.
That's correct.
Okay, so is there a motion to authorize the deputy treasurer to process year-end transfers and amendments to the current fiscal year? Trustee Golio, second. Trustee Flynn, discussion, all in favor? Passes with six ayes. Action item number five is to consider holding a public hearing to hear comments on the tentative budget for 2015-16. This will be on April 14th at 7:30 PM at Village Hall. So this is basically where we, the Treasury Department, the Budget Committee, ourselves, everybody's sort of working on the budget year round, but it's sort of, you know, certain things sort of start to kick in and we have some threshold levels and markers, dates on the calendar coming up that we need to start to meet.
Correct.
So we'll look forward to presenting that budget and hearing more about it and the work to be done on that. So take a motion to schedule the public hearing. This will be for comments on the tentative budget 2015-16 and we'll do this on April 14th, 7:30 PM at Village Hall. Is there a motion? Trustee Rusillo, second. Trustee Golio, all in favor? Okay, passes with six ayes. Action item number six is to consider a motion to call for a public workshop to discuss the tentative budget for 2015-16 on Monday, April 6th at 6:30 PM at Village Hall. So this is sort of a preamble to the 14th and we'll, you know, learn sort of informally, you know, sort of some of the issues, some of the big items, challenges, good, bad, everything.
That's correct.
And then we'll get some more detail. Okay, so a motion to open the public workshop on April 6th, that'll be at 6:30 here at Village Hall to discuss the tentative budget for 15-16. Is there a motion? Trustee Rusillo, second. Trustee Cassell, discussion, all in favor? Okay, that passes. Action item number seven is a motion to close Village Hall on May 29th and June 1st for records management. We do that, I guess around these dates every year, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Is there a motion? Trustee Golio, second. Trustee Flynn, all in favor? Okay, so just noting that Village Hall will be closed on May 29th and June 1st for records management. Consider a motion, resolution to authorize the refunding on 2006 serial bonds. Can we get a little background on that?
Sure. We'll talk about refunding a 2006 serial bond. Hopefully, everybody receives a little package with some background information. Just to give you some information across the board on this, the more important pages I would like to refer to, if you look at page two, for example, on page two, it gives you the probably one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, the fifth line down, it shows you the true interest rate the new bond would be at. That's a point, 2.2. The true interest rate we have right now in the current bond is 4%. So that shows you the savings just on the percent wise, what that would mean to us. If you look at page three, it shows you on that page what the new interest rates are going to be per coupon. So you can see we start at .33 and going up to 2.6, but you can see the true interest rate is a little bit above 2% and what the principal interest payments would be.
But are we, are we fixed right now at a 4% number?
That's correct, yes.
For this, for the same term?
For the remaining couple of years.
Are we changing the term or the tenor on these bonds at all?
We're actually calling them in and issuing, then putting money in escrow account, the money will be invested for the first payment of the bond that's due next year. And then from that point forward, all the coupons, all the bonds will actually be called in. So we're issuing new debt to pay off the old debt. If you look at page four, it shows you what the actual savings would be every year. The total savings will be $289,000 for the full remaining length of the bonds, if you can see that. If you look at, let me see, that's, page five is the escrow fund cash flow, because the money has to be put in escrow. When we actually use that money, when we collect the money, we actually are paying part of that into escrow account that's being held by escrow agent to pay off the outstanding debt. Page six, it shows you what we can assume the interest rate on treasuries will be. That's the money that's going to be held in escrow with treasuries to pay off the debt. Page seven actually shows you, to answer your question, Mayor, this is where you say the 4%, that's outstanding right now. As you can see, that's what the coupon is right now, 4%, which we're reducing. Page eight, it shows you what is remaining in detail, what our principal and interest payment would be and the refunding, the refunding the bonds and refunding interest that we're paying. So we still have to pay the 2016, but after that, that'll go into the new, into the new debt schedule. So this is something I'm very happy to report. I actually, knowing that interest rates are low right now, I've been looking at all outstanding debt. We actually, a couple of years ago, we actually refunded a 2001 bond and we actually saw savings of about $300,000 that year too. So we're looking at this year, $289,000, almost $300,000 savings and that's net. That's after you pay the bond rating agency. Yeah, that's actually net savings to us. We still have to pay Moody's and Standard and Poor's for their bond rating. We have to pay a legal counsel for the bank counsel and we have to pay a financial advisor. So after we pay everything else off the top, the $289,000 is actually what our net savings are going to be. So I'm very happy to report that to us. Every penny counts.
Over the full term of the, of the new, of the new issue?
That's correct.
But we still are going to have some outlays to begin with.
First, yeah, the 2015, after that, we say, we wind up saving $289,000.
Okay.
So hopefully we approve the bonds. Then we have to, next step would be is as soon as you approve this, we'll have to put the resolution in the newspaper for 20 days. So we can't proceed until 20 days after notification is put in the newspaper. So I hope you approve this tonight and we'll start moving on this right away.
And Jeff, as the treasurer, have you had a chance, have you settled in enough to review this particular refunding initiative and have any comments?
Yes, I did take a look at it. I think it's pretty standard and I don't have any additional comments.
You recommend it's something that the board should take action on.
Definitely.
Has the Budget Committee looked at this? Has Bob's group looked it over?
Yes, Bob McLaughlin has to send me emails. He says, "Great job. Go ahead, go for it as soon as you can."
Makes sense, doesn't it? It makes a lot of sense. So the action that we will consider tonight sort of gets the ball rolling. We've got to, we've got to, as you say, post this and then we will eventually, at some point, over the next couple of weeks, we still have to authorize this. Or are we authorizing you to do this tonight?
That's correct.
If anything comes up, so what we do tonight is the action, we're full go on this.
That's correct.
Okay. Is everybody comfortable doing that? Yeah, I mean, I think you've had, Bob looked at it, the treasurer's looked at it. Just want to make sure on these kind of decisions that everybody feels comfortable, we have enough to go with.
Just one thing, do you have the fees, where are the fees that we're paying?
Oh, the fees are actually in one of the, I'm sorry, it's actually in the beginning of the report. I have to go back through it, I'm sorry.
The cost of issuance, yeah.
That's the cost of issuance on page one?
Yes, the cost of issuance, yes.
That's $85,000?
Yep.
Those are the fees that we're paying?
That's correct.
Okay.
How will this, or will this, how will this impact the current budget, looking at this coming up fiscal year?
Doesn't affect it, but we actually, we have to pay the principal interest in the 2015 year, affect the 2016 budget.
Okay. Okay. Good work. Thank you. Then I'll take a motion to consider a resolution to authorize the refunding on the 2006 serial bonds as outlined by the village administrator, as recommended by the village administrator and the village treasurer and which has been reviewed by the villages, citizens' budget committee as well and recommended. Is there a motion? Trustee O'Donnell, second. Trustee Cassell, discussion, all in favor? It passes with six ayes. Yes, it does seem to be a good environment right now to be doing these types of things and I'm sure if there are other opportunities for the village to do more of these and if it makes that kind of economic sense, we should be looking at that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thanks, Marcus.
Anytime.
Action item number nine is to consider a motion authorizing Girl Scout troop, number 1682, to sell cookies, March 27, 2015, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Metro North Station overpass as requested by Dobbs Ferry Girl Scout troop leader, Mrs. Megan Byzon. Is there a motion to approve this request? Trustee Flynn, second. Trustee Cassell, all in favor? Great, go Girl Scouts and so we'll all see them coming off the train and we got another one here. So action item 10 is to consider requests from Girl Scouts troop 1693 to sell cookies at the Metro North Train Station overpass on March 25, 2015, from 4:00 to 5:00 PM as requested by Dobbs Ferry Girl Scout troop leader, Mrs. Azie Usteris. Is there, is there a motion? Trustee Flynn, second. Trustee Rusillo, all in favor of the request by the Girl Scouts? Great, good luck, girls. You raised a lot of money. Action item number 11 is to consider a resolution authorizing the administrator to join the new county CHIP program.
Yes. We discussed this a couple meetings ago, after the County of Wester had decided not to continue with the federal CDBG program, a lot of the projects that we had on the table actually had been removed. This affected a lot of municipalities throughout Westchester County. So the county has come up with a new county initiative to actually try to fund some of the projects that were on the table for a lot of municipalities as a 50-50 match. We were one of the probably 40 communities that were included in that loss of funds. So the county has reached out to borrow money, take a bond out to do these projects, as long each municipality agrees to come up with the match. I put it in front of you to consider. This includes doing the Main Street sidewalk and lighting improvements and streetscape along Main Street. This was done four years ago, one of the reasons we discussed it. We cannot modify from this, but this was what's approved originally. This is a couple steps, because the first thing we do is we join the group, number one. Number two, we have to go out to bid and get the prices in so the board can decide if it's more than we anticipated, so we don't have to do this either. We could also include it in our capital projects, for the five-year capital projects and we can discuss it as part of the budget process also. So there's a couple of stopgaps that we can do and not have to do the project if we don't want to. But we have to do this first step to be included so the county can anticipate the whole bond issue to do the project.
Yes.
One of my pet peeves or acronyms and just so the folks out there understand that CDBG is Community Development Block Grant.
Yes, yes. Thanks for that, Jeff, because it's always hard to bring that one back, you know?
Drives me crazy.
Okay, any other, any questions at all or comments from the board?
Marcus, this was, I guess, Westchester County settled the housing, I guess, once the federal government lifted the, or they re-released the funds, made the funds available being that the housing lawsuit...
No, no, they have not released any fund. The lawsuit is still going on. This is additional money from the county taxes themselves, but they're going to borrow this money separately and then they're going to then give the money to all the municipalities. So this has nothing to do with federal money. The reason they did that, this is because they didn't want to be tied in, when they legal obligations to the federal government. So that's why it's county money for county projects.
Okay.
Okay?
And just to be clear, if we do, if we do consider and pass this resolution tonight, we are in effect committing to these dollar amounts, right?
That's correct. That was originally agreed to originally.
These were the original amounts, right?
That's correct, no change.
I mean, do we have to rebudget those? I mean, do we have to rebudget those, or they, I mean, I'd imagine we have to...
This was all part of our capital project fund, and since it was held off, we never actually borrowed the money. So we do have to then talk about, as part of the capital projects, include it as part of additional borrowed money for the future.
Right. But we've authorized ourselves to do it, essentially.
That's correct.
Because at that time, it made sense, and it still makes sense today.
That's correct.
Okay, any other questions? Great. Marcus, good job there. So I'll take a motion for the resolution as outlined by the village administrator to join the county's chip program. Is there a motion? Trustee Golio, second, trustee Russillo, discussion? All in favor? Passes with six eyes. Action item number 11 is to consider a resolution authorizing, oh, that was 11, sorry, 12. Consider a motion to approve waiving of parking restrictions for the group Esprit de Corps. That's been done, right?
Yeah, we actually have Mercy College has volunteered to take this project on, so it won't affect the village.
Okay. Action item 13 is to consider requests from Ms. Jean Greenberg, Affordables, to have the affordable dollar sale on Saturday, March 21, March 21, and this is to allow patrons to park in the waterfront commuter lot from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. Jean sends a note and letter every year for this great event, which I know a lot of people support, and I know the chief is always on board with this to make sure there's no conflicts at waterfront lot, and it's fine for this date. So everything should be good to go. We just need to formally acknowledge it. Is there a motion to approve the request of Ms. Greenberg? Trustee O'Donnell, second, trustee Golio, discussion? All in favor? Okay, that passes with six eyes. Action item number 14 is to consider a request from the Irvington Town Hall Theater to place signs at the Dobbs Ferry Train Station and the Dobbs Ferry Library one week prior to events and remove the day after the event.
As you can see, Liz sent you an email from the, from the group asking for specific dates, so I can let Liz explain that a little bit. She was talking to these people for a while.
Okay, as you see, we did get the specific dates, because before the request, when they sent it in, was rather vague and open, and I told them that I couldn't really authorize approving that in the format it was submitted. So basically, we have the dates now, that'll have the signs up a week prior to each of the four dates listed. The only thing that I do, will have to confirm with them, is the exact placement of the signs, and that they, since they are freestanding signs, they would have to be completely on village property in order to be in accordance with our code. So that's basically it. They are in conformance with the size requirements stated in the code, so everything else is okay.
Okay. Anybody have an issue with this at all?
Just one comment, Mayor. My son is actually in a chorus line at the Irvington Town Hall Theater. On March 27th, 28th, 29th, but that's not on here, so, yeah, could we ask about that one, Liz?
Which date?
March 27th, 28th, 29th, it's through the BTC.
Okay. Thanks for that, Bill, and you definitely want to, you know, Dobbs Ferry supports the arts in a big way, and whether it's happening here in Dobbs Ferry or our neighbors to the north, if we can help out, that's fine. These are, these are locations are pretty good, they're not placing signs all over town. Right, and these would be pretty appropriate places, so we don't see an issue with this. Thanks, Liz, for working with him to kind of get the dates in the spot, so. So let's, let's do this, take a motion, take a motion to approve the request from the Irvington Town Hall Theater. This is the place to sign, at the locations designated by the village clerk, and specifically April 13, April 17, May 18, May 29, and whatever's out there for March 27 through March 29. Is there, is there a motion to approve this request? Trustee Russillo, second, trustee Flynn, discussion? All in favor? Okay, that passes. Thanks for working with them, Liz, on that. 15 is to consider a motion accepting the resignation of Patrick Dougherty. God, seems like he's been resigning for the last, like, two months.
You never got, you never had an official letter, then we need an official letter.
Okay. Does he have one? Oh, we received his official re-letter, here it is. Okay. Well, we've been saying goodbye to Patrick for a little while, and we do wish him luck. And I know he'll, he'll be around to drop in every once in a while to say hello. So good luck to Patrick, and I'll take a motion to accept the resignation of Patrick Dougherty, who did such a great job working for the village for so many years as the, in the Treasury Department. Is there a motion? Trustee Flynn, second, trustee Cassell, discussion? All in favor? Great, that passes with six eyes. Action item 16 is to consider requests from the Artsy Country Club to waive the 30-day advance notice for an alteration of the club liquor license. I see the manager of Artsy Country Club is here. Andrew, would you like to come before the board, or just, I mean, this is pretty straightforward. Darius, I mean, this is a, for other businesses, we've done this, and we know this will really probably help in a lot of ways. It's one less thing that you need to worry about. So is there a motion to approve the request from the Artsy Country Club to waive the 30-day advance notice for an alteration of the club liquor license? Trustee Golio, second, trustee Flynn, discussion? All in favor? Done. I should have called, you should have called me, as I said, you maybe, probably didn't need to come down here for this one, but. Good luck, hope everything up there is progressing, and I know it's been a tough, tough run for you, but it sounds like things are going as well as expected and a plan forward. Andrew, you did such a great job as the manager of the Artsy Country Club, one of the great businesses and places in Dobbs Ferry, and unfortunate fire some time ago, but you guys are working through it, so good luck with that. And I've expressed to the club and to Peter, and, you know, most of what you need to deal with is on the Irvington side, because that's where your building is, but certainly anything that we can do as a village to, to help as a business and as a neighbor and as a friend, you know where you can call. Thanks, Andrew. Okay. And action item number 17 is the one that we added at the beginning, is a consideration for a home rule resolution. Marcus, basically, the background for this is, we have seen this in other forms before, but it's essentially a resolution that would encourage our, well, where we would be adopting a home rule request, asking our state legislature to adopt Assembly Bill Number 922, which specifically addresses the ability of local municipalities, such as Dobbs Ferry, to be able to initiate a, impose a special hotel tax.
If I may, Mayor, this was initiative reading from the VOC, Terrytown, Elmsford, is a request from neighboring villages to try to push this along as soon as possible. Terrytown actually drafted a resolution that actually being passed around to all the other villages to get done. So they're requesting, it was a last-minute thing.
Which is what we have before us here tonight.
That's correct. That's actually what's drafted by the village of Terrytown. So they're hoping that the other villages join in, more people together, feel they got more strength behind it to get it passed.
Right, and I know that we have discussed this at the village officers, the VOC meetings. Been discussing this a lot. Yonkers has now joined, which is huge. I think Pleasantville came in, a few other municipalities, villages along the line, of course, Greenburg, the town of Greenburg. Paul Finer is very much behind this and supporting it. And I, you know, we hope that our Mr. Abinadi and our representatives in the legislature can really support this. And one thing I would just add for the public to know is that the hotel industry will not be fighting this bill per se. I mean, they don't love to be taxed, but part of the resolution and part of the understanding is that a portion of the taxes collected will be returned back to the hotel industry for them to use as investment in PR, promotion, and tourism, which will, you know, help them. So there's a little bit of a compromise there, so. Okay, so I think pretty straightforward. Obviously, this is something that we, that we really would like to have, and I think it's an issue of fairness, too, because some municipalities have this, and it's a mission of tax fairness here under the law. Okay, thanks for that. So I'll take a motion to adopt a resolution, or approving the resolution, to adopt the home rule request, asking the state legislator to adopt Assembly Bill Number 922 as presented and as outlined. Is there a motion? Trustee Golio, second, trustee Cassell, discussion? All in favor? Great, that passes with six eyes. And I think that gets us to the end. Okay, great. Thanks, everybody. We just need to look at the minutes for the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for February 24, 2015. Has everybody had a chance to review those, and are there any edits, modifications, amendments we need to make? Okay. Who wasn't here? Is everybody here? Kathy, and she's absent tonight, so she's not going to be voting anyway. Okay. Okay, so then I'll take a motion to adopt the minutes for February 24, 2015, as presented. Is there a motion? Trustee Russillo, second, trustee Golio, discussion? All in favor? Okay, the minutes are adopted for that night. And then some reports. I think we want to just kind of report a little bit on the waterfront park. You know, we had to kick this around a little bit. We had sent a tentative opening rededication date in early May, but because of the weather and the fact that we are fairly certain that the snow isn't going to be melting soon, or soon as we'd like, that it's in the best interest of the park, long-term, to push back the rededication date. And we've talked to the county about this, and some other folks, obviously with the Waterfront Committee, and I think June 13 is the date that we're going to be targeting now. So we want to communicate that. You know, it's, I don't see us doing it any earlier, certainly, and we're trying, and we're going to look to accommodate the graduation this year at the waterfront park. So June 13, anything you want to add?
No, you got it.
You don't want to add anything, do you? We keep our fingers crossed here and hope the snow melts quickly. So June 13, and we'll communicate this more through newsletters and as we get closer to that date, but that is what the village is targeting for a rededication for the new waterfront park. Second report announcement is that we, I think, I think we've talked about this before, that the villages of Dobbs Ferry and Hastings conducted jointly, or worked together, to, on a New York State Efficiency Grant, under the New York State Efficiency Grant Program, retained a consultant, Le Bear's Group, to do a full analysis of the DPW operations of both municipalities, and specifically, under that, under that analysis, and the funds that were received includes a, looking at the full consolidation of both departments, you know, as a, as a, as a condition of receiving those funds. So that has, that was part of the work. And then looking, just going on down the line, looking at, you know, possibly sharing of staff and shared services and vehicles and equipment, perhaps just the facilities, or the Dobbs Ferry facility. And so that report has been completed, it was presented in draft form to both municipalities, to give the municipalities a comment, just a comment period. And we just want to report that Dobbs Ferry, the board, we've gone through, we don't have any additional comments to make. And in fact, we're looking forward to, as part of the study, is a presentation that will be given jointly to the municipalities, the boards, and an open meeting for residents and interested parties. So we understand that Hastings still has some comments or something that they're looking at.
Yes.
So they want a little bit more time until we actually release to the, to the public. But we just want to be on record, that Dobbs Ferry, we're ready to release it. We want, you know, people to see it, we're interested in seeing it, and getting to the presentation date, which likely will be sometime in April, but, so we're just going to wait to hear from Hastings on that, but we just wanted to make that clear.
Perfect.
Okay. Marcus, anything else you need to add? Any reports? Bill, let's start down there. Trustee Flynn?
Great, thank you, Mayor. Just some announcements on behalf of the Rec Department. The Spring Holiday Easter Egg Hunt is on March 28 at 10:00 a.m. at Gould Park. And on April 11, summer camp registration begins. So you can register at the Embassy Center, you're going to have to register at the Embassy Center, and all the camps' registration time is from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. So that's on April 11. So there's teen camp available, that's for children entering the sixth and ninth grade in the fall, and that goes from July 6 to July 31. There's this senior day camp, and that's for children entering first through sixth grades in the fall. It goes from June 30 to August 7. So you can sign up for a six-week program, a three-week program, or a two-week program. And finally, there's a junior day camp for four and five-year-olds. And again, that goes from June 6 to 30. There's the same six-week, third-week, and two-week program. That camp will be held at the Embassy Center, and I'm sorry, Mayor, the senior camp will be held at Springhurst. And finally, in the spirit of a healthy environment, we are going to have Community Cleanup Day again on Sunday, April 19, from 12:00 noon to 1:00 p.m. As we get closer to the dates, Mayor, I'll announce the sites where people could show up and help volunteer for the cleanup day.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Don, anything? Vic, anything? Jeff, anything?
Just to say that the first of the conversations on the climate action plan happened on Sunday, March 1, which, you know, we were blessed again with another snowstorm, but very happily, 20 folks showed up for the meeting. It was a productive discussion, so that will continue the next one. These are held at the Dobbs Ferry Public Library, will be March 22 on waste. So that should be an interesting discussion. And I guess the last thing is just a reminder that the PTSA's used book sale is this weekend, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
Great, thanks, Jeff. And I hope to make one of the upcoming Sunday meetings, I couldn't make the last one, but I know there's a, there's a series of these, we did put them on the newsletter, and it's a great, and another great example of the work really being supported by the Energy Task Force and community involvement on these important issues. That's great, thanks. Any, anything? Okay, I just have a couple of things here. At first, I want to congratulate the Historical Society. Some of us went to, I know trustee Russillo was there Saturday night, and we're all very, very busy, and, but they hosted a fantastic show on Hamilton. I want to thank co-presidents Mary Donovan, Frank Farrington, Jeff O'Donnell, who's liaison, and has been a member of the Dobbs Ferry Historical Board, and all the board members. They really put on a great show, with standing room only, great presentation on Hamilton, Alexander Hamilton, and very, very historical and very informative. And there were a lot of young people there that night, and I think they must have thought there was beer. There was wine, but there, but that was really good to see, so many people show up and getting some new, young people involved. Yeah, yeah, he did a good job, so. But really, thanks to the Historical Society for all the work that they do, and putting on and supporting, hosting programs like that is just great. And hopefully, we can see some more and get some more of the younger people involved in coming to that, and helping to contribute and support the activities there. So that was great. We do want to announce that Dobbs Ferry will be participating in the Sleepy Hollow Terrytown St. Patrick's Day Parade. This is an annual event, this year it'll be held Sunday, March 15. The parade kicks off at 1:30 p.m. on Main Street in Terrytown, and then it heads north on Broadway and concludes around 3:00 p.m. on Beckham Avenue in Sleepy Hollow. Our own trustee Flynn was a marshal one year there, and I think, is it Kevin Hartnett that's being, is it going to be a marshal this year? And Bob McLaughlin was, so there's usually some Dobbs Ferry, you know, color here in participation as grand marshals, it's great. But it's a great event, and we love being there. So just hopefully, as many of the trustees can be there on March 15, if it's, hopefully, it's a good day. And we know the Dobbs Ferry Police Department and Fire Department will also be involved with some equipment. And we want to encourage everybody who wants to come out on Sunday, March 15, and walk with us and be part of it, it's always fun. The Dobbs Ferry Women's Club on 54 Clinton Avenue is hosting a attic sale. This will be on Saturday, March 21, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Treasures, there'll be a cafe, bake sale, and household items, and much more. So come out and support the Dobbs Ferry Women's Club on Saturday, March 21, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And I think that'll do it for tonight. Thanks.
Just one thing.
Yes, Jeff?
Wanted to mention, from the Energy Task Force standpoint, the mayor has asked me to look into paperless meetings. This is the first night that I have not used the paper that we were provided, but used the material sent to us by Liz, and it worked okay. It's not there yet, so I will keep progressing with that and keep the board informed in terms of figuring out how we can stop using so many copies.
Here, here, that's great. Good work on that, we look forward to hearing more about that, and maybe transitioning at some point here in the not-too-distant future.
Yeah, Vic? Just one last thing, just to touch on trustee Flynn's comments and his prayer about, you know, turning the corner on spring. I know nobody more than Gary is probably waiting for that, and Gary, just once again, you know, you and the guys, you know, with those last storms, just what a great job, you know, they did. I mean, out there shoveling at night, seeing those trucks go by, and waking up and being able to get around has been a great job by you guys, considering that the snow is not going away at all. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Great meeting tonight, a lot of good, positive action taken and initiatives. Look forward to seeing everybody back here in a couple of weeks, there being no further business. Meeting is adjourned.